Started here. Perfect. Uh, at this time, we will call to order the meeting of town council for November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And uh, states of America. Into the republic which stands one nation under God.
Uh, night full of announcements, uh. First thing is you saw a uh beautiful new fire truck out front, uh graciously brought this evening by members of Inglewood Fire Company. We appreciate that uh for you taking time to show that off. Uh, happy to have that within the town. So, thank you very much. Uh, continuing on, leaf pickup began on October fourteenth and will be extended until December thirteenth. Leaf bags are available for purchase at Town Hall. The streets that are leafbag streets are listed on the website. Winterfest will take place Saturday, December seventh at McCann's Town Hall from four to seven P M. The town of McCann is seeking applicants for a full-time code enforcement officer. A job description is available online. An interested candidate should submit a cover letter and resume to zoning at town of McCann list dot org. The position will remain open until filled. Town Council has extended the application period until November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four for a variety of boards and committees. Please visit our website to apply. Uh, we also have a special. Event this evening, we have a recognition of Sergeant Eric Egley's promotion to the position of police lieutenant. Effective today, Mr. Wall. Mister Eggly.
First of all, let me say what a pleasure it is to be. Swearing in. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Eric Egley.
I, Eric Egley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of police lieutenant with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of police lieutenant with fidelity. Congratulations.
He didn't whiff. You did great.
Well, thank you all for the support. Uh, first one of today is better today. Uh, I know a lot of sports of F R P and my coworkers are all here. Um, Happy Veterans Day. Thank you all. We appreciate your service. Um, I'm lucky enough. My parents and my in-laws also came. Uh, my dad is also a Vietnam War veteran, so I appreciate them coming as well. Uh, so thank you for all the support. As you can see, um, I tremendous support from my family, my coworkers. I'm just looking to expand that uh that role with our department and keep putting our department to the forefront of all enforcement and keep us as professional as possible. So, thank you very much.
Uh, continuing on, uh, we have this time uh. For public comment on agenda items only. So if you have a comment to make on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and address. And uh, we will go ahead and get your comment. As as that's happening, if anyone feels they they'd like to go, go ahead. We'll give a brief moment.
Congratulations by all means, go ahead.
All right. I I don't believe there is any public comment. Mister Wall would like to add a a moment here. Go ahead, Mister Wall.
Yeah, I would also like to echo uh Lieutenant Egley's comments and. You know, the reason that we're all here is because of the sacrifices. That our veterans have made over the years. So, Happy Veterans Day to all you veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Wall. Um, the meeting minutes uh for the October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four meeting were previously sent. Uh, we need a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Mister Wall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved. Uh, we're moving on now to the part of the meeting with reports of committees. Uh, reports of public safety, Mister Wall, please.
You have the chief's report, although I don't think anybody from the police department is here. For this.
No, it's.
Reports in the packet. He asked me to answer any questions I could if anybody had any at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the fire marshals report, Jeff.
Good evening, everybody. I don't have anything to add to the report, although you might notice to my left some very nice artwork. Um. Sadly to say, none of them are mine. They're too good, but um. But thank you to Melinda for, um, she sifted through a lot of the uh, the nice. We'll say collage of 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 stuff we received from the schools for fire prevention. Um, she just put up some of the ones here and. You know, we'll keep those also on the back wall, kind of our uh, you know, Hall of Fame here. Um, other than that, there's just one other reminder. Um, for those council members, if you have not RSVP'd for our fire banquet, I do have a couple that have RSVP'd. Um, if you could, please let me know. Um, you know, we'll definitely try to keep a plate for you guys. You don't have to come and eat. You can stay as long as you want. You can again partake in the festivities, however you want to do. If you want to stay all night, absolutely. We'd love to have you all. Um, but again, I just so that I kind of have a, you know, a good tally here, um, since uh, you know, I've already provided some numbers to Chadwick. This is the last year, so we're gonna. We're gonna go all the bang. I know if if they should, if the staff shows up, so we we might be in a parking lot or, as I don't know yet, but um, we'll see what happens. So other than that, that's all I got.
Right.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Building permit report is in your packet. You have any questions? Um, Mister Schwen now. Uh, moving on to liaison reports, the personnel board is in your packet. And Mister Hart, the volunteer firefighters steering committee.
I was unable to make the volunteer first, the firefighter steer committee. Mrs. Clonan was uh. In attendance.
And the minutes were in the packet and I they reflect everything that went on. It was good meeting.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on public safety? Mister Hart.
Uh, let's see. So uh, purports from facilities management, uh, staff report from. Uh, Brad, if you can hear us.
I can hear you.
Do you have any?
Gotcha.
Comments on the uh. Staff report for public works.
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Hey Brad, I just wanted to tell you the report was impressive. This is Joe Wall. The important that you get, the report that you put in was very impressive. And the work that you guys are doing in the storm waters. Equally is impressive.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So there's a detailed report in the packet for for that. Anybody would like to see that? Uh. Liaison reports, um.
Let me ask one more question for Brad. Brad, I I noticed in the report that some of the ponds were retrofitted. Um, do you know, did we retrofit all of them? Or are we still working towards that goal? Of those.
We have one more to retrofit. We sort of had to uh, we had to meet with Kelly about it. Um, because we had some questions on it, but we have one more left to go.
Okay, and there's still, I think, four more additional that you'll be working towards. As well, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Um, so liaison reports, environmental. Environmental advisory uh committee, uh, Mister Giorgetti.
Meeting minutes are in your packet. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Bless you. Um. Ad hoc technology committee, uh, Mister Wall.
We have not had another meeting. We will have a meeting um in the in early stages of December.
Okay. Um, ad hoc stormwater uh management committee, Mister Singer.
No meaning, but we will try to have another one here before the end of the year. Uh, again, I stress, you know, we're ahead on our pollution reduction plans. Um, we're just working with some spot areas of flooding concerns and resident concerns within the town.
Okay, any um. Possibly address on the uh, the area of like Little Pine Creek down by Remington?
Yes, we're looking into that. Uh, we're working right now with our engineer on some uh dam permitting and stuff of that effect as well in that watershed.
Thank you. Um. Public comment on facilities management? Seeing none, um, we'll move on to reports from service committee, Mister Casey.
You want me to run this, Jack? I'll I'll run this part for you, okay? Uh, the liaison reports, uh, M T S A, the meeting minutes are in your packet. If there are any questions. Uh, they can be addressed to Jack probably at another time. Um. The McCann's Frankel Park Ambulance Authority. Uh, we have uh to talk later as a future item about um composition of that board and appointments. Uh, so we have that as an actual item later on. Um, the previous budget was uh presented here. And um. That will also be part of our final budget presentation, I'm sure as well. If there's any further questions, uh, myself or Jack can answer those. Uh, Northland Public Library Authority, Mister Giorgetti.
Those meeting minutes are in your packet, and I will also state that the renovation process is well underway and is going well.
Great. Thank you. Uh, any public comment on services? Pending none, uh, we can continue through our agenda. There is no old business to discuss. Uh, but we do have new business and we are reviewing the second half of the two thousand twenty-five budget. Workshop. It's great.
Good evening, council. Uh, give me just one second. Those, round two. So tonight we're doing, um, this year we are doing this a little out of order. Normally we do um, tonight first. And then we do the second budget workshop that we did as the first one. Um, tonight, what we're going to talk about. Is the revenues. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about general fund revenues as well as some of the administration departments. A couple of the public safety. Departments that we skipped last meeting as well as the culture and recreation departments. And then we'll wrap up with a couple of the special revenue funds. Um, they're specifically used for um capital improvements. But um, nothing too um, too startling and consistent with prior years. We talked last meeting about the consolidated budget for two thousand twenty-five. We are looking at twenty-seven million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. As your consolidated budget for two thousand twenty-five as proposed. That breaks down. Into a seventy-two percent of that is the general fund at about nineteen points eight million. Uh, capital projects is coming in at just under six and a half million at twenty-four percent of that uh twenty-seven million. And then the other three funds that we'll talk about later this evening wrap up that um last few percentage points. As I mentioned, tonight, we're going to talk about revenues specifically for general fund, where the money comes from. This is a visual shows you that the large piece of the pie comes from earned income tax. It's consistent at about forty-two percent this year. Real estate taxes at twenty percent. There is no tax increase for two thousand twenty-five as proposed. The real estate transfer tax or the realty transfer tax is coming in at ten percent. We did project that a little differently. We'll talk about that in a minute. And then business privilege tax is holding strong at just under ten percent. You can see how state funding and local funding make up. Some of the other components, and then you have your incidentals there at the end. As we said, about forty-two percent of our general fund budget revenue uh revenue bu- budget is earned income tax. And that is a one percent tax to our residents. And it is a strong revenue source here for the town, and it helps us to keep our property tax levels low. Again, for two thousand twenty-five, we are not projecting an increase in the millage rate for the town of McCannless. That's the twentieth consecutive year. This year we did take a small um. Change in our philosophy in projecting realty transfer tax. Um, over the last five years, we've seen a strong. Um, performance in commercial real estate transfers, and so we took a five-year average and projected that for two thousand twenty-five. And as I mentioned, business privilege tax remains strong. Last meeting, we did talk about the different public safety and public works departments in the town's budget. That made up forty-six percent and twenty-two percent respectively. Tonight, we're going to talk about the general government funds at thirteen percent of the total general fund budget and the culture and racket five percent. The general government departments make up about two point six million dollars for the town. You can see how they're broken out here. Um. Town administration, building and plant, financial administration, tax collection, town council and public information. Town council's budget is the people you see in front of you. Um, there is no increase in the council stipend for this year. There is also money in this budget to assist with um council to perform their duties. Including professional organizations and attendance at conferences. Um, the town attorney's retainer is here, but most of the other town attorney fees are within the departments that they serve. You can see that there is a reduction. Um, we did reduce the amount of money that is projected for strategic planning in two thousand twenty-five. Um, we have fees, I'm sorry, we have funds still available in the fund. In the department for us to perform those services, um, but we did reduce them going into twenty-five. Town administration is the town manager's budget. Under the town role, um, home road charter, the town manager serves as the chief executive officer of the town. He's responsible for planning and directing and coordinating all town programs. In his budget, there is money for the town's code of ordinance updates. It also includes the business application portions of our I T contract. The legal costs that I mentioned in the previous department. As well as some additional items. Um, we have a replacement for administration vehicle this year. Um, as well as his conferences and trainings. You can see the increase in that budget is mostly attributable to that capital purchase and that percentage there is wrong. It should show a hundred percent. Um. But as you can see, we are keeping it um still within that six eighty. Range. The finance department is the assistant town manager and finance director's budget or my budget. It includes three other additional employees. Um, to perform the different financial functions for the town. We also have professional fees for things for items like the retirement plan and the annual financial audit. Can see the increases there. We had the um H R function in as a part-time position in twenty-four. We have moved it back to a full-time position potentially for twenty-five. The tax collection budget. Includes all of the items needed um to collect the taxes for the town of McCannless as well as for North Allegheny School District. Um. We have the tax collector as well as her full-time assistant. And a portion of my salaries that we um are. We utilize to collect taxes here in the town. Um, also, this department covers the business privilege tax collection. Um. And then there is an upgrade for our pr- software, um, enterprise software program for the tax collection is in this program for two thousand twenty-five. An item of note, you'll see the tax collection costs reimbursements here at the bottom of that page. We do bill back um North Allegheny School District for a portion of the salaries for these individuals. Four oh six is citizen information. This is our public information officer. This includes a lot of the public engagement items we have in our budget. Specifically, the town's website, McMail, the town crier. Things that we use to reach out to our citizens to inform them about what's going on within the town. Just a standard increase here. Building and plant. This is the last administration department. Um, this department includes primarily um insurance and general maintenance for the town. About three hundred thousand dollars of that is insurance. Then there is additional money for maintenance. We also include cleaning costs for here at the town hall as well as I T services and other general services for the town departments. Couple of the departments that we need to touch base on for public safety that we didn't uh wrap up last meeting. Does any, before I move on, is there any questions on general administration? So code enforcement and planning and zoning are the next two departments that fall typically under public safety. Keep in mind. Public safety is about a nine million dollar budget. This is about seven percent between these two departments. It's why we wrap them into general administration. As part of this workshop. There is a new vehicle in this program. It includes two and a half individuals. The code enforcement officer, the building inspector, as well as a part um, part-time for the administration of that department. This department is supported by the building permit fees as well as a small portion of court fines and ordinances. The planning and zoning department, this is RJ and her assistant. Not a whole lot of difference in this year to last year. Um, unfortunately, when her budget is this small. Any little increase does cause it to look like it's bigger than it is. Um, additionally, we do have subdivision and land development fees that support her department. That wraps up the public safety. I am, I'm moving right along tonight. Culture and Recreation by Department. Um, this includes um culture, which is the Heritage and Cultural Center, the Parks Department, as well as the library and the community celebrations. This is a total of a million dollar budget um between the four departments, and so you can see how that breakout works there. The Heritage and Cultural Center is termed under four fifty-one. You can see how that's broken out there. It includes um costs associated with coordinating the operation of the Heritage Center. As well as the um financial development and promotional committee's goal to hold regular programs and hold fundraising events to build a capital reserve and offset operating expenses for the Heritage Center. Funds have been included to assist with the fundraising activities. Can see the consistency there. And there is a supporting revenue item for the Heritage and Cultural Center to um accept general donations. Parks. This is a shared department between Public Works as well as the new Parks and Rec Coordinator. Um, the majority of this department does fall under Brad, uh, but there is a portion of it that is uh controlled by Abby. Um, it includes not only Abby's part-time wages, but also the two summer workers that we put in. For uh Public Works to assist with the park operations um throughout the summer months. Um, in addition to that, we have maintenance or repair services for the rec facilities. The larger uh projects are included in the capital improvement project fund. Can see that slight increase there. We've already seen the presentation from the library for two thousand twenty-five. It has been approved by council. You can see the increase uh is at three percent from year over year. Um, from twenty-four to twenty-five. Community events, this department includes um National Night Out, Community Day and other smaller events such as the Winterfest. Concerts and movies in the park. Many new events are planned for two thousand twenty-five under the coordination efforts of the Parks and Rec Director. There are some personnel costs in this, not only in support of. The. Individual events for some overtime for staff, but also at the manager's discretion. Can see the community events there. We do anticipate community day donations as well as recreation and activity fees in two thousand twenty-five to support these programs. Refunds is a housekeeping area. Um, a lot of this is prior year refunds. Um, you can see the majority of that comes out of earned income tax. It's handled by Keystone. The transfer to capital improvement program. Fund, um, we talked about this at the last meeting. This is projected to be at two and a half million consistent with this year. This will be the general fund transfer from general funds. Fund balance to C I P. Or capital improvement program. Which again is at about six and a half million dollars. This is the transportation district fund. The town issued uh bonds to support the uh development of the transportation district. Uh, back in the early two thousands, and we have repayment options for that for those members that go out from twenty-nine to thirty-one. Um, so we anticipate about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year that comes in from those individuals. This money is designated to assist in the help of. Funding our capital improvement program. And we, you'll see that transfer there um into that fund annually. The assessment district funds, um, this fund, I do have a correction here um in the projected budget. For two thousand twenty-four, I'm sorry, the projected numbers for two thousand twenty-four, you will see a number here. In the general fund transfers out once we do the reappropriation ordinance um next month. Typically, as we do work within the town that we intend to lean, we will fund it through this fund and then repay it through the taxes that are received later on. Sorry, it's a little slow between the computer and the arrow. Um. The State Highway Aid Fund, this is the liquid fuels money that we receive from the state. This money can be used in support of our rope road program. It can be used to fund um the purchase of salt for our roads in the winter. Um, the town has traditionally used this money to support the road program. Again, the road program from the last workshop is to be funded at a million and a half for two thousand twenty-five. You can see here that we're anticipating about eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to come from the state in liquid fuels. The remainder of that money will be made up from general fund transfers. That money has um decreased slightly year over year, so we do have a projection of a reduction of about one percent over the next five years. Any questions on special revenue? Any questions on culture and rec? Yes, sir, Mister.
I'm a liquid fuels. You so you see it going down.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming it's people, less people using gasoline. But isn't there a uh makeup tax on E Vs?
That. Thank you.
And we're not getting any of that?
We're not seeing an increase year over year.
Okay.
Um, we did see a bump in. Twenty-three. And now, um, and then. We projected a little bit more in twenty-four because of interest. Um, but. I'm not comfortable projecting an increase year over year.
Thank you.
Again, this is the two thousand twenty-five budget. I will mention that is because this is revenue night. We had revenues of a little over eighteen million. The difference between the eighteen million in revenues and the nineteen seven. In expenses is a drawdown on fund balance projected of one point six million. You can see we have a very healthy fund balance. I'm not concerned about that, and that is a fund balance policy that the town has in place to help fund C I P. Um, but yes, there is um. There is an anticipation draw from uh prior year fund balance to balance this uh general fund budget.
That also ties into some projects that carried over as well.
Correct, absolutely. As as you all know, we're waiting on three dump trucks. Um, we've had a delay in some of our larger projects. And so that happens continuously.
Uh, just for the greater good of us all timeline here, we've had two meetings uh with these presentations. Where do we go from here?
Where we go from here is um next meeting on November twenty-fifth, we will have the public hearing on the two thousand twenty-five budget. It has been advertised. It'll appear um in next week's um Northern Journal. And so at that time, council. And so at that time, council um or any of the members of the public citizens can make comment on this year's budget. It is available on the website. If you stop in at town hall between nine and five, I'll provide you with a copy. You can, I will also have this presentation on the website tomorrow. And then on December ninth, the, during the town council regular meeting, we will review the public hearing on the budget. And there will be an approval of the twenty twenty-five budget, and then there will be a small executive session for staff.
My question is, are we gonna have the executive session? Because that's the salary would be before we vote on the budget?
Generally, that's not how that happens. Um, but we do have a um, we have the agreements for both of the collective bargaining agreements are included in this year's budget as well as an increase for staff. It's usually a chance for town council to give direction to the town manager above and beyond that.
Okay.
Okay?
So eh, December ninth, we should have our budget.
December ninth, we should have an adopted budget at the end of that meeting. Yes, sir.
And you're going at the November twenty-fifth meeting, we're going to do the housekeeping and the reappropriation, correct?
We will have um the inter- I will have an introduction for the reappropriation meeting. There will be a public hearing on that on December ninth, and then the vote on that will be on December sixteenth.
Okay.
I try not to put both public hearings on the same night because they gets confused. Um, but yes, November twenty-fifth, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them between now and then or after. Um, is there any questions on tonight's presentation?
No, and just, just again, another housekeeping item, making the statement that after we have that public hearing, we have, we cannot make any major changes again then after that public hearing, correct?
They, they, nothing material.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that note.
Yes, normally, um, in the past, council has either directed staff or management to um concede one item for another at that point. Um, and there's never been anything, in my five years, has never been anything of significant change.
Understood. I just want to make it known that there's something major, please talk to you before that public.
Yes, I, I would, we would very much appreciate, uh, the town manager and I would very much appreciate any conversations happen before the next meeting.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Greenhouse? Okay, uh, thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation. Uh, moving on, the next item is the McCanns Franklin Park Ambulance Authority Board Seat. There is a memo in your packets. This has been uh discussed a little bit um with some council members. It was talked about, and I believe our town manager made a memo. The understanding here is the McCanns Franklin Park Ambulance Authority consists of, it's a authority that is managed by both McCannis and Franklin Park. McCannis has five board seats and Franklin Park has two board seats. Um, we serve both McCannis and Franklin Park, but we also serve three other uh municipalities, Bradford Woods, Pine Township and Marshall Township. Those three townships do not have board representation. Um, if you followed along with us in the last couple of years, it's been a funding uh source issue. It's been a representation source issue. Our liaison has brought forth um this idea of sharing the application process with those other municipality members. Um, so we're opening this up for discussion tonight. Um, we can make a motion if we feel that's necessary. This was cleared. I had concerns about this of whether or not it was allowed. It was cleared both with the solicitor of the ambulance authority, with our town solicitor. It falls within the Authorities Act as long as, and the, the proposal here is that we would seek, when board vacancies open for our five seats, we would have the ability to seek a uh person to fill that seat from one of the other municipalities that we serve. That would still be voted on by this council, so the control would still, the interview and appointment would still come through McCannis, but we are allowed to seek applicants from outside of our municipal area. So that's the basis of it. Back to the solicitors, according to the Authorities Act, we have that ability to do so as long as we limit it to two seats or less. It cannot be a majority. So in our motion, as in that memo, we just have to add that, that, you know, who applied to McCanns Town Council to fill no more than two, um, is something to add to that. But we're gonna throw this out here. I have interest in this. I think it's a great way to bring those other municipalities and have some skin in the game. And it promotes more of a putting the best person forward on the board. Um, so if there is someone in Pine Township, if there is someone to marshal with, it really opens the pool of applicants up. If the, the ambulance authority is looking for someone specific in finance or someone specific in outreach, reaching out to those other municipalities might not only help them and bring them more involved, but it also gives us more of a pull, pull the best people to represent on the board.
I have a, a question and a comment. First of all, if we are set to open these board seats, do we not risk not having control of the authority? Because right now, the way that I understand it and the wording, Franklin Park is included in the other municipalities, which means if we did identify somebody in Franklin Park that has a skill set certainly, it's a very good chance that even though we're the largest funding portion of the authority, that we would lose voting control.
Uh, if that's a concern, you could amend the emotion to say, you know, motion to allow applicants from all non-member municipalities. And that would be the other three then, if that's something you would.
That's something that I'm definitely having flavor for.
So that's a thought process as well.
I understand the concern, um, but we still, as the folks here would still have the, you know, the right to say no to an individual. So if that person came up, we would still have that ability.
What are your thoughts on?
Um, I, I think it's good because I do believe these other municipalities want some agency in what is happening on the board. Um, they've always been welcome, of course, to attend meetings and so forth. But right now, with the critical issue of funding for the ambulance authority that's not going away, I do believe we should have um input from those municipalities on our, on our board.
And I can speak to that. The other municipalities who have come to that are, you know, for this. They would welcome this ability to have it opened up elsewhere.
And I do want to make a point that, you know, so far from what I've seen in five years on council, the folks that we have ser- had serve on our McCannis Franklin Park Authority have been incredibly talented. Um, brilliant individuals. So, you know, sometimes we say, well, we, we're not, we maybe are not getting the best person, but I have to say we have had some really great people on the authority. I want to make that very clear. It's not for lack of talent in our community.
Thank you. Done?
Agreed. I mean, I, I think you have to open it up. It's only fair to open it up to people that are already paying something. And if we're gonna try and get the best talent pool, it's like the city of Pittsburgh had to open up positions. Plumbers, try to get qualified teachers in the city because they didn't have enough teachers. So we're gonna get qualified people. We're gonna have to open it up.
So, so now there's seven, right? Five McCannis, two in Franklin Park. And what's, what's Franklin Park's thought on this? Is, I mean, they're amenable to this?
My understanding is that they would be on board with this, yes.
Okay. I know there was some talk about expanding it, right?
This is kind of a, a negotiated thought process on behalf of McCannis of not getting into a, a whole redoing of the ambulance authority. This was McCannis kind of taking it in their hands and saying, here's a, here's an alternate solution to provide some
Understood.
Relief at this point, without going fully into a, it's very hard with five member municipalities, all the different council members and everything else to get everyone on the same page, and this is kind of a half step. I shouldn't say a half step. This is an intermediary step to get to an endpoint.
And Mr. Singer, let me ask you, redoing the bylaws and everything in this is very expensive.
Correct, yes, yes.
It's, it's a gigantic financial.
This is an economic.
Also was one of my concerns. I did clear that with our solicitor of how we can back the existing bylaws. We are within our rights to do this as presented without modifying anything. And that has been cleared.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of, of, you know, consideration for the other municipalities, certainly.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Giorgietti?
I'm full support of this. I think it's best that we open this up to attract a wider pool and get higher quality members of this board and have everyone else have skin in the game too.
All right, thank you, Mr. Giorgietti. Mr. Casey?
Absolutely in favor.
Yeah. Um, it sounds like we have a majority of favor here. Do we want to have a motion uh to vote on this? There was one provided in the memorandum. If anybody wants to make that with the modification.
I will make the motion to allow applicants from all municipalities served by the McCannis Franklin Park Ambulance Authority to be eligible to apply to the, to the McCannis Town Council to fill the town.
To fill no more, or up to two. It can't be a majority.
Or.
So, to fill up to two of.
Of the McCannis Franklin Park Ambulance Authority Board of Directors.
Did we want to?
Yeah, I think I, if I could read a motion and somebody'd like to make it, the motion would be to allow applicants from all non-member municipalities served by the McCannis Franklin Park Ambulance Authority to be eligible to apply to McCannis Town Council to fill no more than two of the town-controlled seats on the McCannis Franklin Park Ambulance Authority Board of Directors.
I'll make his motion.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Clunin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for working our way through that. Um, the next item up here is the Main Street Matters Grant. Uh, for those of you who have seen, the state has come out and said there's a new program, uh, Main Street Matters. It's to promote uh, small um main streets and items that affect in local municipalities. State-funded, it's actually a name change of a previous grant, so this is not a one-time grant. We will see this going around. Um, administration looked into this. There's multiple aspects of it, everything from the planning phase to sidewalks, the property acquisitions, everything else. Um, they looked into this. They worked with our state representatives. And one of the first things is, uh, thought of looking at a planning side of this, possibly for Ingamar. Uh, we have to pass a resolution this evening as part of that.
I make a motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution number fourteen of the two thousand twenty-four series requesting a Main Street Matters Grant.
So there has been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hart. Is there any further discussion? Or John, do you want to add anything to this?
Uh, the only comment I'll make is, uh, you know, after conversations with the engineer and with the representatives, Main Street Matters is a revamp of a current program. This pot of money will be available each year, and actually the pot of money will increase. There's about twenty-six million statewide right now. Uh, the planning grant is a great place to start. We had a meeting with DCD. They were very interested in the project and thought we were a good candidate for the planning phase of this, so.
Is this a matching grant?
It's a twenty-five percent match, so we'd have to be able to commit twelve thousand five hundred towards the fifty if we received the entire amount.
Thank you.
And the issue with applying for the uh, the uh construction phase, it's a fifty percent match. So as we do the plan and come up with what those costs would be, we'd have to be very committed to the project because it's a fifty percent match on part of the town.
Thank you for that. Any other questions?
John, is there a match? Or there is a companion grant from the, the county of Allegheny?
It, I'm not sure if it applies towards the planning process, but I'm gonna work with uh Representative Filiagi to see if it does. I know that it will uh companion with construction projects, but I'm not sure about the.
Okay.
Okay, so we do have a motion in a second. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, at this time, any public non-agenda comments? Please come forward, state your name and address.
You know that musical number I promised you months ago? It won't be tonight. Iron Caliendo four one one ha. I'm going to ask one more time. Please reinstate the virtual option for residents to attend these meetings. Obviously, you know how to do the technology. And I'm sure that the very smart people who work for the town and our technology committee can put whatever layer of security you feel you need to prevent a repeat incident that stopped them in the first place. I can promise you, I won't be an offender if you if you reinstate the virtual option. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments this evening? Thank you very much. Uh, motion to adjourn. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Safe travels.